I'm calling this meeting to order. Today is Monday, October 23rd, 2023. And this is a joint meeting of the Flagstaff City Council and our Water Commission. Notice is hereby given to members of the City Council and to the general public that at this work session, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett here. Vice Mayor Asland.
President.
Councilmember Harris here. Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet here. Chair Riggleman. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Vice Chair Leveridge. Commissioner Alter.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill.
Here.
Commissioner Dilte.
Here.
Commissioner Nonnen.
Here.
And Commissioner Rudell. Great. Um, okay. We do have a flag in here. Um, Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Would you leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
Honey, now are we early today?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's only a minute.
We were joking yesterday.
She ran a half or did that half Iron Man, and I told her I was going to make her stand up and sit down all throughout this meeting.
Thanks, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every inch of justice for all. Councilmember Matthews, our mission statement, please.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would love to. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember Harris, I know that you've done the land acknowledgement for the past couple of meetings, but would you mind reading it today as well?
Yeah, if somebody would give it to me, because I don't have it.
Oh, yeah, there. Pass it down right there.
There it is. Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry to spring that on you.
It's my pleasure. The Flagstaff City Council homily acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you very much. All right, so moving down to item number four, discussion and direction of the rate study financial plans. Staff, please take it away.
All right. Well, we are here as a joint work session, as you know, and I thought we could first kick off with some introductions from our Water Commission members. They've been appointed by you to serve as an advisory board. Our commissioners are involved in water in various ways, and they have a lot of knowledge that we thought would really benefit a group, a bigger discussion. They work in the community in various capacities. So with that, we could do introductions. Should I just, should we just go in order that we are around the table?
Sure.
Okay, starting with Councilmember Nonnen. If you want to just provide a brief introduction and...
I'm John Nonnen. I moved to Flagstaff in 1981. I keep here for a job at NAU. I managed the instructional laboratory program in the chemistry department for 35 years. And I wore a lot of hats, but I learned a lot about toxicology and risk management laboratories and every other hat you could imagine related to labs.
And you're with the Flagstaff Water Group?
I'm with the Flagstaff Water Group too. Okay, back there's a member too, for it. And I've been doing that for about 10 years. So, and we've been looking at water conservation and advanced water treatment to reduce health hazard for the population.
Thank you. And we have Joe.
Yeah, Joe Leveridge with J. Fuller in town here. And we do a lot of work on the water runoff side of things. And I've been working in town for about 20 years now. Next, I lived here for 44 years. So that's about, that's about it.
Robert Dilte from Long Beach, California, originally. Been in the mortuary business there for about 40 years, whole mountain. Moved here about 10 years ago. I love this land. I've been a pilot for 60 years. And I love business. I think water is one of the most important things we have in this community. Let's go ahead and toast water. Thank you.
I'm Ben Ruttle. I'm a professor at Northern Arizona University. I'm also a licensed professional engineer in water resource practice area in the state of Arizona. I don't do very much consulting and definitely not any on the city-related topics, but I do a bit of research. I've worked with the, with Water Services on trying to value water and measure sustainability of water in my position at the university. I've been on the commission for several years. This is my third term. And my, my expertise is in water and its position in the broader system, so bigger picture issues.
Malcolm.
Malcolm Alter. I'm an engineer as well, civil. I worked here forever and retired from here seven or eight years ago. I was once upon a time your private development engineer. I did a stint as temporary city engineer, and most of the time I was your stormwater manager. So surface water flows are kind of my specialty.
Wow, just in time.
Retirement's great. It's interesting to be back in this room. And I wanted to walk down the hall. Well, I had an office downstairs to, in engineering. I don't know if you moved everybody around, right? My last office was down here on the left, and I wanted to just keep walking and see who was in. Anyway, it's great to be back.
They won't let you in now.
Yeah, I noticed there's a combination. I don't have that combination. Anyway, it's great to be here.
Don Bills, retired US Geological Survey as a hydrologist after 42-plus years working for the USGS, still considered an emeritus scientist with the USGS. Most of my career was spent doing basic data collection as well as studies on source water, source water groundwater relationships. And toward the end of my career, focusing on large regional groundwater flow systems throughout Northern and Central Arizona and also working with Native American tribes throughout the region to help them better understand and develop their water resources. Since retirement, I've been mostly focused on doing a lot of nonprofit work for water, water nonprofits in Arizona and California.
Thank you. Don, do we have Chairman Riggleman online? I don't know. He was going to try to join, but do you know what he's going to do?
The area's coast.
Okay, okay. He doesn't sound like he made it on. With that, I just, as city staff, want to convey how important it is to have both groups in the room. In the past with the rate study, we go from a commission meeting to council, back to commission to council, and there's such, I think, a benefit for these larger direction-type topics, for everyone to be in the same room, hearing the same discussion, and hopefully landing on kind of the same conclusion. So we really valuable, value this opportunity today. With that, any logistical things I haven't covered? I'd just like to thank the Water Commission for making the time to do this and council as well, and staff always. Thank you. The first thing to touch on again is the discussion item and direction we're hoping for today is direction on the level of financing for the Water, Wastewater, and Reclaimed Water Fund, and we'll get into that. I just wanted to show our, a water bill. If I can pull this up in... What, what fees are we talking about on the water bill? Just so we're all, we all know. The base meter charge, so this is a typical residential bill. The base meter charge, the tier, so what tier, the residential, the usage charge, how many gallons you use in a month, and then the sewer charge. The energy surcharge is related to the cost of water production, whether it's primarily Upper Lake Mary water or if it's primarily groundwater. The energy charge changes so much each year that each, each year RIC charges a rate for that based on how the energy charges previous year, if that makes sense. So it's related, but it's not a rate we're discussing during the rate study. So just wanted to make sure we all understand that. And with that, I think we're ready to launch into your presentation, Carol. I'll bring that up. And I'm going to pass out one more handout while Carol is talking. Yeah, I didn't staple it, so I couldn't easily funnel it around. Pull up your talk. While you're doing that, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council and commissioners. It's great to be here in person to see you all and talk to you, because I know in the past I've been virtual. And we also have online two other members of STANTEC that are critical to this, this study. We have Andy Burnham. He's our Director of Management and Technology Consulting at STANTEC. We also have Tim Hancock, the Communications Specialist. So you know, you've heard from both of them. They're still here. They'll still speak up. There they are. Thanks. So all of you have seen versions of this presentation that we're going to talk about, but we're honing in on these financial planning scenarios. We have a few things to cover prior to digging into the details. What we'd like to do is go over each of these funds, the Water Fund, Wastewater Fund, and Reclaimed Water Fund, go over the details, and then come back and really dig into what we would, are asking from you. So we'd like to start just, just at a higher level. Erin, if we could go to the communications. We wanted to start with Tim Hancock's discussion on communications because this is critical to what your customers will see as a result.
Well, thank you, Carol. Good afternoon. I'm Tim Hancock, STANTEC's Lead Engagement and Outreach Consultant for this project. We've discussed various elements and different capacities with you in the past. And so let me just share you really with a quick refresher of how these elements are going to come to bear and where things are right now, and more importantly, where are we going the next weeks and months. So as we've discussed, there are really three goals for the communications and outreach program. Number one, educate and inform stakeholders. That's probably the biggest thing we can help you with, is making sure folks at least have correct information out there. Secondly, make sure that they have the ability to provide input. And we're going to have several ways in which to do that. I'm going to go back, Carol, one please. And lastly, we'll be using a variety of tools to make sure we have equitable opportunity across the community. So everything you're doing in the rate study is focused on keeping it clean. Okay, it's really clear. This is water, wastewater, reclaimed water, you know, keeping it clean. And what goes into that is fulfilling all of your regulatory requirements, maintaining quality and reliable service, having high-quality water. Water reclamation continues to be a growing focus in the community. Of course, efficiency and operation remains key. Those are all really the messages that we're going to reinforce through the outreach program. Going into the next slide, you know, we're going to engage a lot of different platforms in order to do this. Again, we're going to inform, but we're also going to receive input. So those platforms are going to consist of things such as virtual information meetings. These can have a very broad reach in Flagstaff because of your high degree of broadband saturation rate. We do recognize that there are going to be pockets of the community we're going to need to tailor some of our outreach program to. In-person meetings will occur as well, things such as drop-in style meetings, where people can have a two-hour window, for example, to come in, learn, and ask some questions. We're also working with a vendor to provide text alerts and phone-in options to broaden that meeting participation across any and all demographics throughout the community. And lastly, we're going to develop materials available for Spanish-speaking stakeholders as well. So if you go to the website, you'll be able to, to click on documents and receive the Spanish translation versions as well. Those are not ready and up yet. We're working on them, so they will be coming. Going into really our last slide, and one of the things I want to share with you on the outreach before you get into the meat and potatoes of your meeting this afternoon, is unveiled to the City Council at their last workshop. A key feature of this outreach program really is the project website. The website is live. It's up and running. And like I said, it's operational, and the site is intended to be a resource of information for residents and businesses to communicate in a two-way means. It's not just to go to the website and get information, to learn about upcoming meetings. Those are all valuable tools. But also, if you have a question or concern, you can click on the Contact Us button, reach out, and that will go to one of a couple staff members who then will follow up with those individuals. So as we develop meetings and dates upcoming, they'll be uploaded and posted to the website. And the role of the outreach really is to take the information that you are presented with and share it with the community in what I call an easily digestible format. So we're going to be working on that education. We're going to be working on normalizing a lot of our languages. But you know, one of the key questions you probably have is, really, what is that message going to be? And quite honestly, this is where we take our cue from you. As we go through the study, we present you with options, and you begin shaping those options, giving direction to staff on how to move forward, even if you're identifying and saying, look, here are the goalposts. Here's the range we're trying to land in, whatever the case may be. We will take our lead from you, and then we will build the information story around that lead. So again, please see what we're doing and working very closely with your communications staff as a tool to go out there and increase the level of education and understanding in the community. And we've developed a number of tools to do that. But as I mentioned, you know, you've got a lot to cover tonight, so I wanted to keep this section pretty brief. I do have a meeting that I'm going to have to step out to in the not-too-distant future here. But if you do have any questions regarding communications, please, you know, convey them to Erin, and whatever she cannot answer based on what we've discussed or decided already, she will take note of those and get back to me, and we'll work with your communications staff to address any questions you may have. But that's, that's the Reader's Digest version of where we're going with the outreach program, and I'll turn it back over to Carol.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Erin.
All righty. If you recall, when we first spoke a few months ago, we talked about the overarching strategies that are driving this rate study. These were some comments and advisory strategies that came out of the last rate study from members of council and the commission. So I just wanted to point out that we're still keeping these in mind, and they're still driving what we're doing. And in particular, strategy, strategy two is developing a long-range financing plan that sets forth the long-term funding needs of water services. So I wanted to just kind of remind everybody of our long-term goal here is to make sure that what we end up here are rates that fund a sustainable plan that helps you deliver your quality of services and completes your repairs and replacements and all those needed improvements you have so that you're working together year over year to be able to deliver good service to your community. So that's really our ultimate goal. But our immediate goal of today is to get your feedback and direction on these, these alternatives. So I'd like to talk about those alternatives, and these, again, are things you've seen before with the addition of that last scenario. We have four rate plans or four rate scenarios. The first rate scenario is called the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. And this is the, the scenario where we're just increasing rates or increasing the rate revenues each year by 5% over the full period for the five-year rate period plus some. So that 5% represents the year-over-year change in inflation in the consumer price index over this last year. So we would have those 5% rate adjustments to fund target reserve balances, operations and maintenance expenses, and a level of capital projects. The second scenario is the smooth catch-up. We understand that you haven't had a rate adjustment in water, wastewater, reclaim since 2020. So in order to catch up with what has happened in the price changes over time from 2020 through 2025, which would be the first year of the rate adjustment, we're looking at an increase in project costs, so therefore, an increase in rates to catch up. But instead of doing it all at once, we're proposing to smooth that out at 8.5% year for five years, and then 5% thereafter. So that's scenario two. Scenario three is the full project funding scenario, full CIP funding scenario. These are the rate adjustments that would be needed to generate sufficient revenues to meet your operations and maintenance needs, your capital improvement program costs for, for all of the projects that we'll be talking about, and then also your reserve fund balances and debt service coverage requirements. So that is scenario three. When we were here talking with you two weeks ago, we discussed an alternative option where you would fund the full CIP scenario but at a more levelized rate of rate adjustments. So that's the scenario that you haven't seen yet, and we're going to be talking about it today. Any questions before I move forward? Okay, here we go. The table at the top shows the three different funds. But what's important about this table is that it shows you the level of capital improvements that are considered under three different levels of the CIP. The approved CIP is that CIP that reflects what's in your current approved balanced financial plan. So that is a partial list of all the projects needed, but it is a list that has been, that you've approved. And that's in that first column. The second column adds in additional projects from your master planning process. It's called the informed CIP. So we're adding in additional projects that have been on your, on your plan for a while but haven't been funded previously. And then that last column adds in another set of projects that have been on an unfunded CIP list. So these are projects that have just kind of been on the radar for a really long time that are needed but haven't had a funding source identified. So we have three levels of these projects. Yes, you're going to go there. Yes. Oh, so Erin and Lisa handed out some, several stacks of papers. You've all read them, right? I'll digest them. The first set of three pages represents those three levels of CIP. So the first set for water, wastewater, and reclaim, so on each page, the first set is that approved CIP, and it's labeled as such. Now, this one is quite colorful because what we've tried to do is highlight which projects came from which document. So for example, the yellow projects are from the master plan. So you have, I think Erin has provided in the past references to the master plan. Erin, were you planning on providing the master plans as well, or is that by reference?
Yes, I'll provide a link to the sewer water master plan and the water infrastructure master plan from 2014, 2015. The master planning process was developed by engineers assessing our water systems for our needs, and the master plans walk through that process really, really well on why these projects are prioritized. And they're all very important projects as outcomes of those master plans that we're still working on. It's hard for us to take that information and put in this format the criticality of all those projects, if that makes sense. But these are the highest priority projects.
Yes.
Thank you. Just two questions, just so I can get my head wrapped around some of this. The Red Gap Ranch, a lot of it was out of a bond fund in 2005?
Yes. Yes, so the voters passed an election for...
To purchase the land.
To purchase Red Gap but to secure water rights. And then we built in the CIP items necessary to secure the pipeline alignment, basically.
So the bond in 2005 wasn't for these line items. It was just to purchase the land.
And I don't, there was some money left over from the bond dollars approved that I felt funded some of this, right?
I was just curious on why they were, if it was bond-funded, why it was listed as a project we were needing to fund? So it sounds like it was just for the purchase of the...
I thought it was for $15 million, and we purchased for 11 something, and then the remainder fed some of the planning work that was necessary. And it's important to note that Red Gap in the CIP list, it totals about $3 million over a 10-year period of, of the $100 million plus that's in there.
So that my second question. So we had a master plan done in 2015?
For water infrastructure? Yes.
So...
2014.
2014. So nine years ago. And so now we're talking about funding what we identified in 2014?
A lot of the projects, the yellow projects on here, were identified in that master plan. Red Gap, I have highlighted in blue as, you know, that's an outcome of securing the water rights for the city, which was that bond topic. Daniel, what's interesting on water, for example, is the unfunded projects are largely yellow in color. Those were identified on that 2014 CIP. So we've deferred a lot of projects to the unfunded list to fund things like highlighted in green, for example, projects triggered by development or other initiatives. So some of our waterline replacement projects might not be our, our priority project, but it's a priority because we don't want to dig twice in an area. It's that dig-one type policy. That brought it to the forefront.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around. I mean, we just went through this with stormwater, and now we've got all these, you know, 10, 20-year projects that have been pending and critical.
Yes.
So, okay, all right. That's enough for right now. Sorry.
And I am prepared with some other slides if we need to help walk through the CIP in more detail as we wrap around to discussion. But hopefully, we're providing materials that are, will help you frame where we're at in our CIP. The second handout that is actually simple, that takes the projects on that CIP list that organizes them by project type. So maintenance projects, resiliency projects, near-term growth and long-term growth. And it identifies if that project is in our current approved CIP, is an informed CIP, which is unfunded, or on the unfunded list. So Lisa worked hard to prepare this to help you, what types of projects are we looking at?
So there were also some questions that it looked like there were duplications between the unfunded and informed CIP. So that chart shows you why they were listed more than one place. Some of it might have been design costs but not construction or, or whatever was funded at the time is not, do not fully fund what the current need is. And so that's why it would be in the informed CIP. So you'll see those multiple Xs across those fields that will indicate why. And they look like it was a duplicate effort, why the duplicate, the name of it in the CIP.
Thank you.
On the flip side of each one of these charts are smaller tables that further define the types of projects. On the water side, the major project list of Red Gap Ranch Pipeline Design and Construction, this is not included in our analysis. So we have not included this in any of these scenarios. The unfunded projects we have, and we've represented them by an average amount each year. The grant-funded projects are important because we're going to be talking about funding sources. So while we're focused on rate funding, we have made a balance between and among rate-funding projects, capacity funding projects, so growth-related projects being funded with growth-related revenues, and grants. So the grants component for each fund is listed here. On the wastewater side, we have the same, that's the second page. It's the same process. The top part of the table is the approved CIP. The second part includes informed project costs as well as the annual unfunded amount. On the flip side is shown the Wildcat Expansion Design and Construction. We do have in our modeling, we've included the treatment plan expansion and construction or the design and construction as a toggle just to see what impact it would have on rates. However, that funding source is not identified as yet. So that would be a topic of conversation. So we have considered it. It's just not going to be in the scenarios that we'll look at right tonight. And then on reclaimed, it's a similar story. You've heard me say this already, but we have the approved CIP, the informed CIP. You've heard me say this already, but we have the approved CIP, the informed, plus unfunded. And then on the back are some, a project that if the grant is not received, the project wouldn't be done. That's the reclaim recharge overhaul project, and then the list of unfunded projects. And then, as Erin mentioned, that staple set of projects will show you where these projects appear, and they approve budget, informed CIP, or unfunded CIP. Okay. Ready to
One quick question. So the, we got the 2015 master plan for sewer, 2014 for water. Do you still feel like, and then you have the development, whatever, different projects, do you still feel like that's a valid list, that there aren't?
Oh, yes, very valid. And I'd like to, do you want to add anything?
I think it's a great question. So again, the intent is every five years, right, you're updating your master plans. So the projects on there that haven't been completed, we do make the assumption that that's going to carry forward. As we update our master plan, any projects not completed are going to be restated in the current with any additional. So why we think it's relevant, even though we are updating our master plans and that will be a continuation, we're very confident in the information that was provided in the earlier master plans.
Well, then, how do you handle emergency things that come up? You weren't expecting it to come here. And so this year, you have your list. Next year, you know, you have a few left from here, they go here to the next year. But then there's some kind of crisis or emergency. Where does that project go? I'm assuming it gets done right then because of the nature. That, no, yes?
Right. It is, it is true. So as things, as things come up that weren't anticipated, that rise up above the priority, you're right, things in the plan in the CIP, they get pushed. Every day, we reprioritize, we re-take projects. And when I say ultimately, what you get is this kind of this tidal wave in your 10-year CIP where, I can't afford to do that this year because this is more important, and I move it one year. And so you kind of just double stack that next year. And so that's why it's important when Stan Tech looks at the work, that smoothing, that they kind of talk about on how you bring those out, because everything can just occur the next year, even though as you start to build out those plans, that is the intent. It can be done this year, still needs done. You move it one year to accommodate your budget that you're working in, and so that there's a smoothing factor that has to occur when you bring this forward.
Now, this is a little bit harder of a question. Who gets to determine what's a crisis and what's an emergency?
So I think
What happens in my neighborhood may not be an emergency to anybody else. So who gets to make those decisions?
All right. Again, I think it's a great question. I think my response would be is I think we get to make that decision. And so ultimately, the way that would work is I bring forth the project. It would be a recommendation from staff saying, this needs to be done, whether it's a form of a design, construction, or ratification, because decisions were made, we bring that back to the council for that type of discussion to say, this is why we need to do this, and why it's important. Ultimately, getting council to approve, whether it's, again, a contract or a reprioritization of why this has to be done, or why we made a decision under a true emergency typically, right, the decision's made, we get it done, and we come back to the council's ratification saying, this happened last week, and this is what we did, and look for your ratification to approve that.
And if I could add, in the water infrastructure master plan, for example, a lot of the prioritization is based on age, age of pipe or material pipe, material type of pipe, or, so that often drives the prioritization as well. Oh, yes, sure.
I have a, I have a question. I really wanted to ask this during the commission meeting the other, the other night, and I'm kind of curious about whether or not these, the numbers that we see on these tables right now have been adjusted for current, current cost conditions. For example, the, most of the yellow highlights come from a 2014 master plan, and then the blue highlights are, are things that came from the 2004 bond election. Considering what's gone on over the last couple of years, you know, pandemic, and other, and all of the issues that that caused with supply chain, a lot of costs have gone up. And we did talk about that a little bit during the commission meeting the other night, in particular, some of the cost increases associated with materials. But the question I didn't get to ask is how those kind of increases are or not reflected in the numbers on these tables.
Mayor, Commissioner Bills, if you look at the table, the first part, the dollars within this table are current dollars. The column for fiscal year 2024, this current year, these have been updated for current costs. And then there's row, like line item 44, I know these are tiny, but the cumulative projected cost escalation row, that would be the second summary row before the orange line in the middle of your page. That is the escalation adjustment, excuse me, of 4% starting in 2025. So we have applied cost escalation to these dollars. So just the line right here. Yeah.
Do you think that's enough? No. What do you think you're going?
We had a long discussion on that, and we all, we looked at changes in the, something called, you know, the E and R, the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. So we looked at those changes. We talked about recent bids. We looked at recent communities in Arizona and what they're assuming for cost escalations. And everyone's assuming higher escalations in the near term and then leveling off optimistically. So again, it's estimates, it's our best estimates today.
There are some projects on this list where you'll see they fall on multiple lines, they fall under approved and informed, and maybe even unfunded. And Councilmember Matthews, I believe you asked this question during the retreat, why are they listed, are they double counted or something? It's just that there might still be a portion of the project that isn't funded because, for various reasons, and we might have to defer a project to cover that funding, if that makes, if that makes sense. But that's why you might see it listed under multiple categories.
So just a real clarification question. I'm sorry, being thick-minded today, but the approved budget X, that's, that's not, we've already allocated to pay for that, that is approved, that we're going to, we need to do it? Because that's not, we don't have money for that in approved budget column, correct?
Well, we, it's in the balanced budget presented to you for this current fiscal year.
Okay, assuming the rate increase?
Not.
Good afternoon. No, it's within the five-year plans that we adopt annually for the budget process. That's based on existing rates.
Okay.
What we can afford to fund in the CIP and operating all that over the next five years.
Okay, so all the Xs in approved budget is already going to be paid for by the current rates that we have, water rates in our five-year budget?
At the levels that are uninflated, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. That is, that's a good distinction, is these are, again, the uninflated values that are in the balance plan. So that is, we'll come across that in a minute. Any other questions on those CIP handouts?
Yes, I had one. The biggest amount on here for the coming fiscal year in 2024 is 22 million for the biosolids treatment. Now, is that covered under the recent bond that was just passed? And I can take that one. That one is, is not, so we actually have two projects, one for the solids handling, the Wildcat Hill digester is a bond project. The Rio is, is not, so a portion of it is being funded by capacity, where the money we collect from developers to buy in is paying for that, and then go forward. But yeah, two distinct projects, digestors at Wildcat and at the Rio solids handling.
And I might just add, the ones that were approved by general obligation bonds that have a different funding source, sort of not in the rate in this plan here, they are a separate fund to just, to deliver those projects.
How are those bonds, bonds paid for?
Those are secondary property taxes that we levy on an annual basis to pay back the debt.
Is that true for all bonds, or just certain types of bonds?
Only voter-approved general obligation debt is allowed to use secondary property tax.
This be a good time to look at those funding sources? If we quickly, you could switch to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can pull that up. Rick's table? Yes.
You're on, Rick.
I hope you used a big phone. Let's keep talking.
I'm glad I'm sitting here.
That could be intentional if it's down like to six, quite six. I can see it.
So we've heard from both meetings we've had with Water Commission and also for City Council about, you know, what are the other resources available to deliver some of these projects? Can we put it on a different resource, or how can we fund these, the CIP and so forth? And so I'm going to just go through some of the resources that we kind of have available in a enterprise fund, water, wastewater, reclaim water, ones we're talking about. And I kind of put a table together, I did this a couple of years ago, where we're talking about infrastructure funding related to Wildcat and those projects. And so this kind of talks you through the red, yellow, green, like red is, or green is like, yeah, these are likely resources and more likely to be associated with these types of funds. Yellow gets into that, you know, well, these are some ideas, we can look at these, but they're not necessarily the recommended approach to go for funding a enterprise funds. And the reds are, yeah, they're available, but there may not be capacity or will to go into those resources for a water fund, wastewater fund, or reclaim water. So of course, starting at the top, that's what we're talking about today, is your user fees. What rates are we going to charge for usage of and consumption of our products for each customer class throughout our city? So that's really the most likely resource for these funds, right? And that's why we're having a conversation today. Capacity fees are allowed also to fund that, those growth projects, but you can only fund the growth portion. So if we upsize a line, we can only pay with capacity fees from that growth part of that waterline, sewer line, and so forth. The rest has to be rate-based or debt financed in that capacity. So you may see a project, but only a portion of it is going to be capacity fee related. We have those for water and wastewater, but reclaim water doesn't have capacity fees. I'm not even sure if the state statute allows us to do capacity fees, but I'm looking at those for this study anyways. So that's why that's a red no at this time. Debt financing is a very popular way to deliver large projects. You issue the debt, and then the debt's paid over years, and multiple users in the future pay into what the improvements were. So that's a common way that we work with our enterprise funds. But we do have policy limits. We can only issue so much debt and have so much debt and debt service on our books over a period of time, both from our water policies, as well as our debt finances, we've already done. We've promised those people who are bonds to only go to a certain level in debt for our water funds. So that's their, but, you know, you can issue debt all day long, but you have to have a rate to pay it back. So it kind of goes back to the top line has to pay back debt service. WIFA is really good. They've got, they got loans where they will, think of the word right, forgive a portion of your loans. We've been successful there, and we will look for their loans. They're really low interest, and sometimes they forgive a portion of principal. So that's a really valuable resource that we have for these funds. Next is federal or state funding. That could be through infrastructure bill, direct appropriations, grants, that's this next line. Yes, they're available, they're competitive, though. Competitive nation, we're competing with other organizations throughout the country to deliver grants. We do have some that we hope are identified as most likely, but then the future, as we go out further, it's really hard to determine what we're going to get in federal funding. Then, as far as reclaim water, I haven't seen much on the reclaim water side for debt financing. So I know we got a big project there, I said debt finance, but federal state grant funding, I haven't seen much out there. I asked Stacey Brecker and Ags, and she says she hasn't seen anything really on the reclaim water side of things. So we got that one kind of yellow, we could look at that more. Then we get into the yellows, like, yeah, these are options that may not fit well for us, but these I just want to put out there to you to understand. Reprioritizing or eliminating capital projects in the existing improvement plan. So if we can't get the rates we need to deliver these projects, we're going to have to figure out something else. We're going to have to say, what's going to be limited, what's going to be pushed out, and it may have a detrimental impact. It will defer maintenance, it may increase costs in the future. So that's something to, you know, juggle with, is that really a way we want to go when they're setting our rates? General obligation bonds, this is something we did for wastewater recently, and also stormwater. We passed some wastewater infrastructure improvements through general obligation bonds, and we're delivering those in a separate fund. So there is ability to do that, there is capacity there, maybe about 40 million right now to stay within the existing rate, but there's also competing needs in the organization, not just water, but maybe recreation, support housing, all these other things have, could have a need that may be a general obligation, obligation bond consideration. So I see the yellows, it's available, we can do it, but there's some priorities to talk about when we get to those. Of course, general fund can support just about every fund within the organization. These funds are no exception. We put these red, though, because general fund's pretty tight on their budget and what resources we have already in there. So that's kind of in the red area. We'd have to prioritize, what are we going to reduce general fund to pay for water and wastewater? It's an option, but unlikely at this point. And of course, a sales tax. We can issue a, ask the voters to approve a sales tax. If we have a major project we want to deliver, and we want to take the voters and ask for a specific sales tax to pay back or build a project, that's an option. We have that in red because I don't see that any of these projects that are currently, we're really focusing on, are those, those levels of asking for a sales tax increase versus a, put a, pass on to user fees. So that's kind of a, a board of kind of what's out there, what's available, what water service funds can do, and I'll ask, answer any questions. Or not. You better.
How are priorities set for that $40 million capacity?
Oh, it comes in many different ways. Sometimes things come directly to staff or through commissions as far as what they'd like to see on ballots, and then it's a conversation. A lot of times, that happens through the budget process as we start planning and looking forward to elections. It comes in a variety of ways.
Question. I don't know if you're the one that will answer it, but, you know, just looking at reprioritizing or eliminating projects, I see a lot of them on this list that I recognize as critical. But how do we, is there a priority of what's super critical and what's just a luxury wish list?
There are no luxuries or wish lists on here. I'll just say that. I'll just say that. But go ahead, Director.
No, I think it's a great point. So within your handouts, we did do our best attempt on the stapled one, to put the projects in list of what we deemed as, if you could only do one thing, and kind of worked through. So we do feel like this is another superiority. Again, I agree with Erin, not meaning that the last thing on the list is a luxury, it's just where it fell in the rating. I think I would also kind of point out, I think that's a great slide that Rick did, and even kind of also shows kind of how we, how we currently exist, right? That we do have rates that do fund some, there are capacity fees that come in to fund some, there's lending, so we're kind of touching on all portions of those. But really, what we're talking about is, I still feel like is there's this, this gap of time, right, from about 2020 to current, as to our funding, where there is like this catch-up that has to occur. But in addition, when you talk about reprioritizing, I think that these other handouts also paint a good picture. They've been a good picture for me. So I will pick on, my first one is water that's on there. And, and if you look at really the, the, I'm sorry, the third line, where it talks about aging infrastructure. infrastructure. And so I think this paints a good picture of how we've been able to do all of the things the last three or four years when things have come in more expensive, when things have come up that we didn't anticipate. And if you look on aging infrastructure in the outward years, it's targeting more like around this million dollar mark, right? We need to be invested in about a million dollars a year in our aging infrastructure just to stay ahead with that. But when you look at what we've spent and what's programmed to be spent over the next few years is $200,000. Well, I'll tell you, like, $200,000 doesn't buy a lot of pipe in the street. But as these other things have come up, as we've had to fill gaps and, and so when you go back to prioritizing, I feel like those are the ones where we've moved them down the prioritization list. We said, we're not gonna spend a million dollars this year on aging infrastructure, we're gonna take a portion of that and we're gonna cover a gap on a project that came in at higher bids than we thought. We're gonna cover a project that came up that has to be done today, there's not, we don't have a choice, like, this is broken, it's gotta be fixed. So I think it does kind of paint a picture, when you look at these reoccurring, these maintenance activities, this is kind of what I would say, like, your asset management of having infrastructure and how are you replacing that stuff? When you look over the last few years and even program the next few years, that's where we've taken the money to kind of fill the gap, to balance a budget, to get the things done, is we did re-prioritize. I wouldn't call it a deferral because when you don't do that $800,000 of infrastructure, you don't ever catch up, you're just, you just don't come back to it, right? And the further we push out that $200,000 and not the million, you just dig a deeper hole, there's not, I don't think there's a pun there, but, right? So some of it is like, well, we'll just, we'll get that next year, right? But we don't increase it by the $800,000 we took, right? The next year, we don't do 1.8, right? We're just still trying to get back to the 1 million to get back to where we should be. But, so hopefully that kind of answers the question of prioritizing. I feel like you can see it in those numbers and that's one that kind of stands out and you see it both on the water and wastewater. You stop doing those things to take care of the urgent, any emergency stuff today.
So that's why you have the informed line for that.
Right, how we, yeah, how we, where we know we need to fill that gap. Thank you.
Also a question, just for perspective, or in two parts, when, so you've been deferring or avoiding, right? That's not free, is it? What's, what's the cost that's incurred to the community over time as you fail to maintain infrastructure and keep up with its lifecycle? And what communities and/or businesses or constituents in the city are going to face those costs disproportionately?
Right, I think it's a great question, almost, kind of almost rhetorical, right? So by deferring it, one, if I don't do something today and I said, I'm gonna do that two years from now, chances are it's gonna cost me twice as much when I go to buy it at that point, right? So I'm, even on deferring it, I'm just compounding the impact of that. But in addition, especially when it comes to infrastructure, a couple of things you gotta keep in mind, some things have these critical points in their lifecycle. So internally, we've been talking a lot about, let's say, storage tanks, for example, we have a water storage tank that we can rehabilitate, I can sandblast it, I can put a new epoxy coating and I can extend the lifecycle of that tank. If I defer that type of maintenance, at some point, that tank will get beyond the period of which it can be rehabilitated. I can no longer sandblast it because it's too thin. Now, instead of being able to sandblast and paint it, I have to construct a whole new tank, which probably is like 10 times the amount to build a new tank as the, as the coating. I think it's very similar with like sewer lines. A sewer line can be rehabilitated until it gets to the point of failure that it can no longer be and it has to be excavated and replaced. And I think very typical would be like the same like this, like your wall thickness, any corrosion on the top that would allow, wouldn't allow you to go in and rehabilitate it, it's beyond that, it's beyond repair, it has to be replaced. Two compounds, right? It would, it's gonna, it costs more in the future, but now I can't just rehabilitate it, I gotta replace the whole thing. And the other thing to keep in mind with infrastructure and, so again, maybe you get away with it this year, right? But not replacing that water line when you can do it at a schedule with traffic control plans and do active bidding is now a major water line breaks that should have been replaced and the damage that that causes, especially to the roadway, to other utilities, even to homes, escalates that cost as opposed to just repairing it at the time, now you're under emergency. You pay a premium for contractors, you're working around the clock, so you're paying overtime and you're disrupting services, you can't give out the notices and sewer would also do the same, right? Once a sewer line collapses, you're having to work that completely until you get it repaired at whatever the cost is. And so you lack that plan. So I think there's just a couple of things on, when you defer on how that escalates it. I kind of feel like you knew the answer to that question when you were asking it, but hopefully I did answer it. Anyway, thank you.
How much does private development, these projects that all of a sudden are needed because we've developed outside the city infrastructure? And I'm looking at your list, you know, and some of these, I don't know exactly, you know, Ula University water line relocation, I assume that's because of the deal with the private developer to realign university. You know, there's other ones on here, GW Power Oversizing, that has some kind of memory with the, all that development just kind of gets punched all the way through. Heindell Water, they're not even in the city, but they're upsized. Some of these things, I'm just curious about, how much do this private, new private development, does that really, how much does it impact your budgeting? Because it seems like if you had a list of projects, you have so much money in the pot, you have this many projects that are priority for this year, then all of a sudden you have to do a water line up sizing Fort Tuthill, which is on here. How much does that impact your budget? And if it does, is there any way to try to avoid that in the future because, or is that capacity fees supposed to pay for that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, that's a very complicated one, so I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to simplify it a little bit. So ultimately, in water services, there's, there's services that we're required to provide and I can't push that on to developers, right? That's, that's my job, that's what I'm supposed to do, that's why we're here talking today. The extension of the line, the developer does pay for that. When we take an initiative to say, a developer is only gonna be required to put in what they need to be successful, right? But if it's an opportune time to say, okay, well, we're forward thinking that, so maybe the developer only needs a 12-inch water line and that's all they're gonna pay, but it's in our best interest to make that a 16-inch water line because it's not just about the development, it's about the greater good of the community, then that upsizing, the city, the water services will be on the hook to pay the delta between the 12 and the 16. And so I say typically, even when you see the upsizing, it's probably not the full project cost of what the developer's incurring, it would just be that portion to say, well, what's gonna make the community better in addition to the developer just doing what they need, right? And not thinking about the bigger picture.
How much does it impact your budget every year for these projects? It seems like it's almost an unknown, or I guess you can see it coming a year ahead when somebody rezones a property out somewhere and it's going to be a high density, but you can kind of see that coming, but then all of a sudden, doesn't that really impact your CIP by pushing other projects off? Because they're moving forward, they're gonna go to construction, right? So all of a sudden, you've gotta fund that upsize.
Right, so I think a couple, there's a couple of, so again, it's like I said, it gets a little complicated, there's a couple of approaches that we take. So ultimately, that does come up. If we, if we find the benefit within the budget, I would say we do make that decision to say, we need to upsize this one, we need to find that. It is possible for a developer to pay for the complete upsizing and go into a reimbursement if it's clear who's gonna benefit from that upsizing. And so they can enter into a reimbursement agreement that the city would facilitate to have them burden that cost. But there are projects where we look at it and say, this would really be a good idea to be a little bit larger, but there's nothing in the budget that we would trade for that. And at that point, the developer puts in what the developer needs and, and you're hoping that you get to the lifecycle of that asset before that upsizing is required. So again, what you're trying to do is weigh the fact that, again, we put in the 12-inch today, if I don't need the 16-inch for 20 years, the developer in the 20-year would have to pay for the 16. But if I need that next year, if I can't get it through a reimbursement agreement or if the city's not directly benefiting from it, you may choose not to upsize it. And there are projects that we don't upsize for those same reasons. The ones that we do upsize that, again, we're looking, we're putting the value to say, within the life of the asset, we will, and that there's a better benefit for the city than the project that we're deferring because that's what we would be ultimately doing. But you're right, it is, it's something that occurs every day and it does move the numbers within, than our project.
Congressman Harris and then Congressman Matthews.
Okay, so let me just make sure that I heard you right. I thought I heard you say that right now the developer needs a six, what'd you say? A 12-inch, okay, let's just, 12-inch. And we say that, oh, we don't need a 16-inch for 20, 25 years. So then when we need that 16-inch, do we charge that back to the developer to do because we could have done it 25 years even though we knew we didn't need it then, but we knew we would need it in 20 years? So do we go back to the developer and say, oh, we, we need a 16-inch one now and you get to pay for it?
The, it would not, to my mind, it wouldn't, probably wouldn't be the same developer because all they needed was a 12-inch.
Okay.
Depending on what's triggering the 16, if it's a new development, we would go to the new developer and say, of course, but you have to upsize it.
Yeah.
I think when you look at like water quality, fire protection, looping the system around, how you can control, like, some of those are the benefits that we're looking for. Definitely when we impact like larger entities, like when you're born the interstate, when you're born the, the train tracks, like, those are things that we weigh where that's, we definitely see that's harder in the future and look to kind of upsize those as well.
So then, just to add to the clarification, like, I think of Timber Sky that is building a huge master planned community, they've done different stages, and they're way out there by Woody Mount, Woody Road. But then there's all the houses infilled, you know, going and going out to the sewer lines. So does that trigger what they're developing out there, they may only need a 12-inch line, but now because of the gap between where they're building and where the end result is, do we, did we, did we conclude that we needed a 16-inch line? They didn't need it for their development, but to bring all that wastewater through, does that make sense?
It does, and I think there's a portion of time where that's definitely assessed, but that's where it gets back and we're very close with our legal team to determine, what's the minimum level of servants I'm supposed to provide? And, and again, when we're talking about them expanding infrastructure, that is on top of their capacity fees. Also, when they pay their capacity fees, is paying into being into a well-operated, functioning system. So if there is a portion of, of line within the system that doesn't have maybe, I'm gonna say, doesn't have the capacity for the development, that cost is not pushed on to the developer, right? That's, that's my job to make sure that that works. They have to pay for whatever they put in that they need.
And what they need and the.
And if I request for them to upsize it, if I can't get it reimbursed through other people who benefit, we have the option that we could pay for that upsizing where it benefits the, the water services of the community.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Another follow-up question, this one's kind of like my last one, you see a pattern. So if you defer upgrading 12 to 16, who is going to pay less and who is going to pay more in the community? How does that shift the cost? We, you, I think you just explained that it's gonna increase costs overall, which it will, right? But who, who among our businesses and residents is gonna end up paying less today and who is gonna pay more later?
And again, that's what we value, but there's certain upsizings that we can pay a little now, upsizing that later would be a tremendous amount of cost. Typically, when you're upsizing, the only thing you're paying the difference is, is the cost of the pipe, right? Everything else is already happening to be done and paid for by the developer. If you don't do that, upsize at that critical point, chances are you have to re-escalate the whole site, you abandon that pipe and you put in the bigger one. So in the future, yeah, so not only will prices escalate, but the magnitude of the project by not upsizing at that critical time would cost more and that would be bored by the ratepayers.
Right. I think, so I think the answer, if I'm correct, is that you've got ratepayers paying more today, a tiny bit more versus perhaps the people buying those homes paying a lot more for them 20 years from now. So it's, it sounds to me like you're gonna, there's an impact on housing costs or development costs long-term if you do this.
It definitely is, but also there would still be instances where, again, if we, if we upsize now, yeah, we would pay a, we'd pay a portion, a smaller portion of that. By not doing that, the developer may also extend their, their service area, but if there is a bottleneck or a pinch point within the system, that could still fall back onto water services to do that correction and that would come at a higher cost. So even if it wasn't directly to that development community, it could still move back to water services as well.
Might add one thing though. Remember too, that a portion of that cost is likely eligible and funded with capacity fees, so it's not just ratepayers. The new customers will pick up their share of that as well. It's a timing issue. You know, we set the capacity fees to recover those costs, but you know, new homes are added over time and new community, new commercials are added over time.
Can we also do a capacity, we used to call them capacity fees, the city can do a capacity fee. Indeed, didn't we just extend one so the hospital has to pay for an over, for an oversize? We did, going out to Fort Tuthill? I thought we extended.
Yeah, I think they can curb that, it's true.
So that was a recapture from, sorry, it's the wrong word for the current day, but we always called it recapture. Can't the city do a recapture for the oversizing of that line?
Yeah, I think that's what we call the reimbursement, but yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It is true.
How about if we move on to the water scenarios and then we can have more discussion on those? It was all good, but you can also tell how capital improvement planning is not very easy. We're looking at the end results of many, many years and discussions. That would be.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you. All right, we'll talk about the water fund first and you've seen a version of this table before. This shows us the results and the projected rate adjustments each year for the next five years for each of those four scenarios we discussed. So the first scenario again is the Consumer Price Index or CPI. That scenario would fund $120 million of capital improvement project costs from fiscal year 2024 through 2023. The smooth catch-up would fund $152 million, so that's a little bit more given a little bit higher rate adjustments in the near term. The full funding scenario is that full water CIP with inflation of 208 million and that would be over that 11-year period and we're, excuse me, nine-year period, and we're looking at rate adjustments in the near term that are higher and then they taper off. Discussions a couple of weeks ago with you generated an alternative option where we looked at, let's, can we get the same results? Can we fund the same amount of capital because we know we need it, but at a more smoothed level? That's the orange alternative option. That's still $208 million of CIP, but it's in a level 15% annual adjustment over that five-year period, then it drops down to 5% per year. So that's the new scenario that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. Everyone really probably wants to know what this means for a ratepayer. The next slide that Erin's showing you is a typical water bill impact for a 4,000 gallon user. So that's 4,000 gallons a month. We understand that some users have more usage, some less, but this is a typical bill in your area and this is a residential bill. You'll see that the values for each of the scenarios represent an incremental change in a customer's bill. So for the first current column is zero because that's today and with that CPI adjustment, a monthly bill would go up $1.54. That ranges from $1.54 to the $6.19 per month for the full funding option. The alternative funding option however, would get you to that same result of the $208 million full funding, but with an adjustment each month for the first year of $4.66. What is very interesting about this next slide is it shows you basically what we've been talking about on these sheets on your handouts. The approved CIP, the approved plus informed CIP and the full CIP. This middle set of bars does not include cost escalation, while this set of bars does include escalation. This is more what we're forecasting reality to be at this point. And then these are the four scenarios and how much of the CIP would be covered. And then these are the four scenarios and how much of the CIP would be covered. The chart shows us that that CPI adjustment scenario will cover the approved scenario, but in today's dollars, not in escalated dollars. It won't cover all or 100% of the improved budget at, with cost escalation. The smooth catch-up version will fund the approved CIP with escalation, but it won't cover the approved plus informed with escalation. And then finally, you see that the last two scenarios, full funding and the alternative option, both cover all of the scenarios, particularly the full CIP with escalation. On a chart, year by year, four different scenarios are laid out in a similar fashion. So you see that over time, we've got some projects that would not get funded under the first two scenarios, whereas the last two scenarios each year would fund the same amount of projects as depicted in the approved CIP plus informed plus unfunded. Something that we heard from the Water Commission is that what about operating and maintenance expenses? And how much of our costs are we talking about for CIP versus operations versus debt service? This chart shows us the annual expenses by type. This particular scenario is the alternative option for water where you have that annual 15% adjustments. The operations and maintenance expenses include salaries and benefits and chemicals and electricity costs and operating capital, all to maintain a healthy system. And you see that going up pretty slowly over time. The CIP, though, is a little spiky, but that fully funds the full CIP. The purple section is the outstanding debt service plus new debt from borrowings that we're projecting. So it's a mixture of cash, borrowing for, so debt, and then the capital improvement project costs that would be funded through rates. Could we go back to that for a second? I know this is a new chart. Does that make sense? Okay, great. All right, then the rest of the charts for water just demonstrate the impact over time for each of these scenarios on different types of users. So our typical residential customer using 4,000 gallons a month would see these, could see these types of bills. And remember that this, this isn't the rate design phase of the rate study. This is just assuming an across-the-board increase. We haven't even looked at your fixed charges or your tiers, or your tiers possibly for other customer classes. So we're just looking at across-the-board increases. The, the highest lines are for the full CIP and the alternative option. And you'll notice they converge at 2029. So they're identical after 2029 in terms of the impact on a customer's bill. It just takes longer to get there for that alternative option. It's a slower impact over time.
May I ask that question? May I ask a question, Carol? If, okay, I'm a resident and I'm seeing this and I'm like, whoa, would the, the growth-related projects on, on here that, the dollars, millions of dollars that would trickle to capacity fees, would that reduce these amounts potentially when you get to the rate design phase?
We are, we're still looking at capacity fees. And so that, we have not incorporated, we needed an instruction on what level of CIP and particularly growth or level of improvements to include in the capacity fee. So that could, the capacity fees could be adjusted to account for that and it would reduce a bill for, could reduce a bill for a customer as a potential for that.
That's an important point.
Yeah. This is just sort of, would it be a worst case for a resident at this point in time?
Well, we are assuming some level of capacity fees already. So, but, so it could, I'm not sure I would call it the worst case, but it, it is, it could be reduced.
Councilmember Matthews and then Commissioner Rudolph. Is it Rudolph or Rudolph?
So two questions. Because, you know, everybody's water usage is different. So if I look at the $36 today, which my bill is not, and then I look at 2033, basically I can do the math without going back and looking at my usage and say my water bill in that span of time is going to double.
It could, it depends on your usage, but yeah.
Yes, if I use it the same, it's going to double. So, and then with the capacity fees, like once we approve this rate increase, that rate increase is going to go up regardless of capacity fees. Because this is just based on the water usage that the consumer, whether it's commercial or residential, this is based on the gallons per usage. And so whether we collect more capacity fees or not is not going to change once we set that rate in motion.
Councilmember Matthews, I think if, if we, say we increase the capacity fees, it would, it could reduce the total, it doesn't reduce the total amount of revenue that you need to recover, that we, that we gain from this part of the study, but it could reduce the amount of rate revenue. So, so yes, it could reduce the bill from, or the impact on a customer.
So I, I guess I'm confused on that because once we set a rate's going to be X percent or X dollars per gallon, and then we see an increase in capacity fee collection, unless you're suggesting that we go back every year and say, wow, we collected a lot more in capacity fees, we can reduce that rate. Once we approve this rate adjustment, that's the rate adjustment individually, what we're using per gallon that we use.
I think I finally understand what you're, pardon me. Sorry for that. So here, we're not setting a rate. We're setting a rate adjustment to rate revenue needed.
Oh, okay.
So it's not, it's not set, and that's why we have that little footnote there. So this doesn't mean that everybody's rate is going to go up by 5% for that first scenario or 15%. What it means is that's the additional rate revenue that is needed each year. And then through the rate process, we will refine how much needs to be recovered from residential customers, from commercial, from your other types of customers, to collect that same amount of revenue based on the cost of service process. Is that better?
Maybe.
For now.
The question that I asked at last week's Water Commission meeting pertained to the Wildcat plant expansion, which is a very large capital expense, which I understand is not in this study. First part of the question, this is confirm that that large cost is not in the study?
Because when we get to the wastewater side, you'll see that the scenarios we're showing you, the expansion is not in there. However, we have looked at it, but it does need further investigation as to funding sources.
Okay. So, and this is maybe a follow-up to Erin Young's point, but I, unfortunately, I don't think that these numbers are anything close to a worst-case scenario because they don't include at least one major project that we know is 100% coming at us in some form. And there may be other things that happen as well that we can't see coming. So these numbers are not a worst-case scenario. They, in my opinion, they are actually a bit of an underestimate even when you take that into account.
I could add to that too because the unfunded is $57 million and most of that is in the ground infrastructure, most of it, not all. And then I'm also wondering, are the dollars adjusted? So much you buy a can of beer now for a buck and a half, is it, is it going to be $5? I'll just make an example, but is it, is it adjusted, you have the dollars adjusted for that far down the road too?
We have the.
The buying power of me.
Yes, we do for, through 2033 at this point. We have projections.
Good CPI.
Yes.
Now, one thing you've got to keep in mind is depending upon how we conserve, that could push out Red Gap Ranch and other 20 years or 30 years. It just depends on whether we go and start using reclaimed water for DPR, correct potable reuse. So you've got all these pieces that we don't know what's going to happen in 10, 20 years.
One of the things that we'll talk about after we get through the scenarios is I don't think we're asking you to commit to every single year here. You know, this is something that we're forecasting and we, and can change over time, certainly. So if you would look and consider at a level of rates that would, or rate adjustments that would get you to a certain amount of capital that would satisfy what you need in the next few years, you can take another look at it. Over the next, you're not, I don't think you're committed to signing up for this program for the next five years or 10 years. That would be impractical, so.
So, just so I'm sure about this, those costs up there are for three parts of the water bill?
This one is just two parts.
Two parts, which two parts are?
This is for your water base charge and your water usage rate. So on this handout, the three pages, our, our water bill example, it's for the sewer we'll get to next.
Right.
On water conservation, I just wanted to add that on this project list, because water conservation has been dropping and we still are on target for our water conservation strategic plan goal to keep dropping to a total of 80 gallons per capita per day, we're not triggering Red Gap Ranch in this 10-year plan. We're not triggering that investment in, in construction. We will trigger a groundwater well from time to time that's in here. So because of our efforts, we have significant avoided costs. We would be paying a lot more today in our water rate if it hadn't been for water conservation efforts that started with City Council in 1989. And I explain a little of that in this handout, a Q and A handout based on questions heard in the retreat and our Water Commission meeting. Most of the projects are maintenance-related, replacement, not ones where water conservation will push these off. I, I just thought that might help.
Erin, this is Andy, just real quick, if I could. I just want to clarify, this bill calculation is $36. It does include the energy rate too.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's a good one.
I wanted to ask, but I didn't know if you'd have the answer, so. Andy sounds like God. Now I have to find it again. This is embarrassing. What happened to it?
Erin, can somebody ask a question? If you go to the, of the PowerPoint, you can probably find your recently used. It came up in a different window and.
I'll, I'll ask a question since she said somebody should ask a question. This is, this is for the future, but I feel really strongly about this. You're not to the tiered grades yet and what I want to say is just that I think some of the high users of water and reclaim both need to pay more of the brunt of this. I have a nameless neighbor who is still watering to this morning, okay? And every day. And then I think about the golf courses for reclaim. I think about NAU and how much water they use. I think about the fact that you guys should get rid of that lawn on City Hall. I know it's reclaimed, but that's a resource too. So I just wanted, you asked for somebody to make a comment. There it is. I think when you get to the.
You can court your neighbor to our water conservation program.
Yeah, no kidding.
And they will.
When you guys get to the tiered grades, I'd like to see some of the big users carry some of the brunt and we try to lessen the brunt off the single-family home where the lower-tier users, that's.
Thank you. And lower the price for the brewery.
That's right.
Okay.
It sounds like outdoor water use is your bigger concern if I heard you right. Those were outdoor.
Yeah, sure, yes.
Because there's a rate design for that, for sure.
What's the break again for gallons for going to tier one or tier two now?
I think it's 3,500?
3,500 gallons.
Here's our commercial.
We have the same chart for commercial and then let's skim through some of these others if we could. You had seen this before and now we show explicitly the water energy rate for the city. The city's typical bill is that purple component.
So do the rest of cities not have that separated out and it's incorporated?
They do not, yeah. That's unused.
So that's in there.
It's unique.
Ours is very unique.
And the same for commercial. You can see that with the, with that energy component, it's right at the average for the sample of your peers. Thanks, Erin. How about if we move to wastewater and then we can come circle all back? Wastewater has a, a similar type setup, but a little bit of a difference in the alternative option. So just like in water, we have the CPI scenario, smooth catch-up scenario and full C, full funding. The amount of funding varies greatly across the three, of the CIP, across the three scenarios at the top. The alternative option is presented again to level out those increases, those increases in wastewater rate revenue. And in this case, it's not, these are not equivalent in terms of timing. In order to get a lower rate adjustment for the first two years, you'll see that's 25% for the first two years and then it drops to 15%, and then to 10, and then five, and it levels out at five. We looked at the deferring some projects and these were roughly some, about $3 million in the first three years of unfunded-type projects and pushed them out to the later years. The impact of that push, that deferral, as we discussed, is higher cost. So in total, you'll see that the alternative option full funding level is greater than the full CIP. It's 139 million versus 125 million. So that is the result of pushing out projects and bringing them back in. Just, oh, that, oh, okay, that's good. As far as the impact on a customer's wastewater monthly bill for residential customers, you'll see that the same user at 4,000 gallons would see their bill on that alternative option increase by about $5.31.
Can we read you?
Yes, okay. Then, I hope it's okay if I go a little more quickly, I'm looking at the time. So that, the scenario of, for funding the different types of capital, you'll see is very similar. The CPI scenario doesn't cover the approved CIP with escalation. The smooth catch-up does, but it doesn't cover, you know, any more than that. It only covers a portion of the approved plus the informed CIP. The full funding scenario covers the full CIP with escalation. We have a fourth orange bar because with, as I mentioned, due to the cost of the deferral, we have a little bit higher program and that's the hatch part. And here you see the, the line chart. That's very similar to what we had looked at for water, except we have that higher bar, or excuse me, higher line over here than the full CIP version. And that's the annual cost. Just like for water, we see the different components of the revenue that needs to be recovered in each of these scenarios. So the O and M is pretty consistently escalating at an average rate across the years. And then the CIP represents that CIP line chart that you just saw, plus borrowing. The cost of debt is here. That annual debt service payment is the purple line that increases in that near term and then it gets paid down over the long term. Unlike water, the residential bill is forecasted to be different. So you'll see that it starts at $21 today and then by 2029, it's about $20 different than that full CIP version for the alternative option. And over time, it is, it's lower than that full CIP. And that's, that's again because we looked at deferring those projects and pushing them back. Same picture for commercial customers. And then here's that wastewater bill comparison. So these are the bills today. This is a bill today for a residential wastewater. Your wastewater fee, or wastewater bill is just a, a usage part of the bill. There's no fixed component to the service charge. It's just a per-unit-of-use type bill, which as you, can you go back again, Erin? I think what's interesting about that is some of your peers only have a fixed part to their sewer. to their sewer bill, and some have a base or fixed plus volume. And, yeah, there we go, same thing with commercial. Okay, one more fund, and then we can have a discussion. The reclaimed water scenario summaries, again, just like we saw before, you'll see a big difference between the CPI funding level of $7 million and the full funding scenario of 69 million. What happens with the alternative option is, per your policy, per city policy, you can only charge these reclaimed rates at 35% of the potable water rate. So we're limited to what we can do for this option. This option violates that policy, so the full funding option is not, is not a viable option under the current policy. And then you have the alternative option that will generate $11 million in CIP funding with the same rate adjustments that we assumed for water. Now, there is, Erin, could you go back one more time, please? Thanks. So your policy has been in place for quite a while, right, on the reclaimed water rate?
Seven years.
Seven years. I think it changed, it went up from 25 to 35 or something in 2016.
Is it a policy or is it a regulation?
Policy.
So it can be changed?
It can be changed.
It can be discretionary, whereas water and sewer cannot be. That has to be based on the cost of service.
I just wanted to point out that it's a policy decision that could be changed if you wanted to fund more capital on the reclaimed side or find other alternative sources for funding that program.
So this is all loaded on users of reclaimed water?
Yes.
So mainly snowbowl, golf courses?
City, city points, you have nine?
City, NAU.
Nine accounts? Nine, nine accounts.
So those are the four main users?
Big accounts, we have like 70 users, 70 agreements.
So under our current policy, how do we make up that difference between full funding and alternative options?
Currently, it's not, it's not in practice. So this would just be, if you were able to, if you decided to go with the alternative option on the water side, and you increased your, or you adjusted your rate revenues from water by 15%, then that would, could, the reclaimed rate could be adjusted by 15% and you would be able to fund $11 million of project cost rather than the full amount.
Right, so we've got 69 million in, in need. How do we make up that difference? How are we paying for the rest of it?
Well, Mayor, this is currently not approved, so all of those additional projects are not approved for being completed. So you would have to find another funding source, and it could be what Rick presented. Look for perhaps a share from other, other funds or from, yes.
I thought you were going to show me another slide that's like, and this is how we pay for it.
So, so $12.8 million of that increase comes from one project, and that's the waterline loop, Fox Glen Park to Continental, so what's that all about?
So that project is prioritized pretty low. That would fully loop the Purple Pipe system around the city.
So it closes the gap between the Rio Loop and the Wildcat Loop?
And it provides for just a better servicing of the line, but it doesn't add capacity or anything, it's just something we would like to do someday.
So if you, if you would drop that out of the mix like Red Gap, what effect would that have?
I'm sorry, can you...
If you were to take that $12.8 million out, like we did for Red Gap Ranch because it's way out there, how would that affect these projections?
It would lower the 69 million by 12 million. So that's where Lisa provided a prioritization list, so that includes these reclaimed projects. So that's just a, that might have to be a separate discussion because reclaim isn't, there are some projects on that list that aren't critical. And I hope you don't mind me, that's my view, is like looping the system has been a to-do in the future.
Want to talk to me?
Yeah, reclaim, I think there's some, projects are less critical to providing the level of service we're currently, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we did identify with the reclaimed, so specifically talk about this line extension. Operational, there's value in that, right? Looping the system around creates redundancy on how we provide that service to customers from our efficiency of how we pump it to chemical addition. So it's more an operational strategy, but if that line wasn't looped, all of our customers would have water because we give them water today. And so again, so it's low on the priority, meaning it wouldn't jump over other projects, but if we ever run out of things to do, that would be something that we would, operationally, right, we could benefit from by doing that. So we do have it listed as a project, it's unfunded now, and like she said, low on the priority, because it's not that critical service, but there is still a value, there's not things on the plan that, again, we're just doing for the fun of it, right? There's, there's a reason why it's a project, just it doesn't align more important than some of the other ones.
If you were to do that project, would it affect other projects that you have in line?
If we did that one today?
The expansion of the, the volume you could pump up to the Buffalo Park tank.
Yeah, so even where that's listed now, those projects do list higher in the priority that we would do those first.
Right. But would you need those projects if you have the loop?
You would still need them, yeah. If not, I think you're right, that alternative would be something that we would look at, but I may be an addition too.
I, this is a very complicated plan with some very large uncertainties in it. This is something that I, I think is worth pointing out, right? So we've broken this down, we've listened to it, the engineers have been all over it and the staff, and we're still looking at some very large uncertainties about how much things are going to cost because we've just gone through 30 to 120% inflation in costs in three years. And who knows what's going to happen in the next 20 years when that starts happening? I mean, these things could all be 10 times as much 20 years from now, or they could be less. It's, because we just had crazy shocks to the economy and the prices, so there's a big uncertainty. There's also Wildcat expansion, which is as big as all of these things added together and the wastewater, that's another $200 million, give or take $100 million. So when I deal with problems like this, I try, I try to take a philosophy to decision-making that I want to recommend to you all. There's a few, there's a few strategies. First one is recognize that this plan is going to change dramatically in terms of its size and scope in ways that we can't predict, in my view. And so you need to prioritize an approach to the plan that's flexible and resilient, where if something big changes or goes wrong, or we can roll with that. We don't want to, we don't want to have a very inflexible plan. We need some breathing room and some flexibility, that's important. Another way I like to think about this is just to think about what's big and what's small. Something I teach in engineering class, it's one of the fundamentals of engineering is that you just forget about anything that's less than 10%. It's, when you're having your discussions about designing a solution in a complicated situation, I ask, what's big? And all the stuff that, all the stuff that doesn't add up to 10% is just kind of down in the noise. Not that it doesn't matter, but it's not going to solve the problem for you, right? So when you're focusing on solutions, you want to be talking about the stuff that's 50% of the problem, 20% of the problem, not the stuff that's 2% of the problem. It's, it'll get solved one way or another, and the 50% stuff's not going to solve itself, right? So my question, that's, there's some philosophy, just in case it's helpful. So we're looking, we're looking at numbers that are big, they're uncertain, and they're not just big for water services, these are big numbers compared to the city's overall operations, right? Not just consequence for payers, these are consequential for the whole financial future of the city, right? We've had elections that were fought over $70 million. We're looking at $200 million, $400 million here or more, right? So this is big. Anyway, my question for the staff and the engineers is, what's big here? What's big, what are the big ones? What are the two or three big, big old marbles in the jar that we could be looking at, talking about here?
I think there's a couple of approaches. So I think when you go back to the staple sheet, the ones that you see the Xs by on what's funded, like those are the big ones. These are things we, like they're having to be done, they got to move forward. And as Stan Tech alluded to, like on the path that we're at, like escalation is leaves us behind, we're not going to be able to do this stuff with the Xs. Like that has to be done. I know that Mr. Tatter has talked before the groups too about when you're funding projects with one-time money, that's reoccurring costs, like that has to be fixed. So all of these things that we've been doing, right, they're kind of catching up to a soul. We have to right-size that. I think specifically for wastewater, it comes down to like the two biggest things on that list is going to be your solids handling and your collection system, right? There are two projects right now that, that we're working on, and that's the Rio solids handling and the Wildcat interceptor. Like those, those projects have to be well underway before this rate even happens. Like those are just things that, like it's, it's out there in the real world and those have to be done. And those are going to be probably close to, I'm just ballparking, right, probably $15 million worth of work that'll be in the design or under construction, right, before we even finish the rate study and talking about how we're going to collect the revenues. That's a big, that's a big number. In addition to the bond projects that we listed that already came up a couple of years ago and went through, and went through its kind of own iteration, like those are happening between stormwater and wastewater, that's $60 million with the bond projects.
So the bond projects aren't even listed?
They're listed in there. So that $60 million worth of work has to also be done. So when you're looking at that five-year window, just the bond projects and the two in wastewater, right, you're talking $110 million of projects that have to turn out. What you're, and as you were pointing to, right, that every day, the change of those numbers, right, every day that number's changing. So the faster we turn those projects out to try to get ahead of that inflation curve, those are things that have to happen. I think I would probably also share that, so we do look at grant funding. I know Erin and her team just got us one grant awarded, I think the next one's in the queue, that she's, I know she's going to get it, she won't let me say it, but I know she's going to get it. And we have other grant applications. I think the challenge that we have is this mentality of, we know this stuff has to be done, we know grants, funding opportunities are in our, that is a tool in our toolbox, and we have to maximize that, and we do work to do that. I think unfortunately, sometimes we get so ambitious that we take a project that has to be done today, and we put that on the grant list. And if the grant's going to take you two or three years to secure the grant, that project can't always wait two or three years, right? And you begin to fill that thing. So we do, so even though it's part of our strategy, I feel like we do have to get a little smarter on how we apply what projects and how we do that, and the things that have to be done today, we do have to do those today, and we got to re, we got to reconsider that. I think that's, that's something we're learning to navigate through. But for some of our larger projects, that is a bigger portion. Why it's not included in the rate study is, again, we're super optimistic that, one, we're going to apply for those grants and those applications and that other funding, and that we're going to be successful at just getting a portion of it. And we need that stuff to continue to develop. As we determine what it is we're looking to do and how that funding comes in, doing the right thing at the right time, that's why they weren't included in, because like that has to be our strategy going forward. But the things that have to happen today, I think you can tell on, they're the things that are funded, they're the things that we're moving on. That's why, that's why we're having, that's why we're moving on them. Hopefully that kind of answered your question a little bit when you said, what's the, what are the hot topics, or what are the things that have to be done now?
City manager, and then how do we, yeah, take public comment, do we need cards? Do you need to keep cards for people like us?
It would be helpful to have cards, yes, but we can do it kind of in front of you.
Okay, so, so one moment, please, Ward. City manager.
Thank you, this goes to Commissioner Riddell's comments. And I tend to agree that, you know, identifying major projects that are unfunded and then a lot of the other unfunded projects, but, and I talked about this earlier today in a staff meeting, Wildcat expansion, that's not probably the way it seems to the body of this matrix, but it's referenced as table one, major project. You have $220 million in addition to another $25 million for design, so $245 million. And then table two speaks to unfunded projects. Well, my question is, Wildcat certainly is unfunded, but does it suffice simply to reference it here in table one as a major project? Should it be clear that maybe we have a table of all unfunded projects, and you can separate those out into major projects and minor projects or however you want? But I guess one I'm advocating is Wildcat just, just seems to be referenced here as a companion table to this. I'm not at all suggesting it be part of the rate study, but I'm very much suggesting it be embedded within the capital improvement plan as an unfunded project because of its relevancy. I mean, this is a project that we've often talked about should start materializing within the next five years. So, you have thoughts?
We did talk about this with Andy as well, and we developed an approach. How is it best to discuss that approach within the framework provided just now?
Well, I think if I might, I believe what you're saying is that, right now, we're removing the Wildcat expansion from the unfunded list, when it is truly unfunded today. So by removing it from the CIP discussion, we're not acknowledging that it is still a need and it's not included. When we were doing our modeling, we included it as a, we'll call it a toggle, that we can turn it on and turn it off in the model. But when we ran our numbers, we, we had questions about the timing and the funding sources. So are you asking us to just acknowledge that it is still unfunded, but we're not including the dollars in our values up here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that it be given more prominence within the overall CIP, and I know there's uncertainties about it, but I think it's past the point of referring to it as a project that's just out there and it's just going to get referenced in some fashion. I think it needs much more discussion than that. And I don't know how that happens, you know, how you do give it more relevancy with this topic, but it's just a curiosity to me that you have a list of unfunded projects and Wildcat, in my opinion, should be like at the top of that list.
Do you want to, I see you're kind of...
So, yeah, we had a conversation earlier. We're not exactly sure what Wildcat looks like, but we talked about at least putting a line in the CIP, the five-year plans and what we start developing for council on the annual basis, five, 10-year plans. But there has to be an offset to balance out. We're just talking about put a placeholder as financing to be determined. We haven't decided if it's rates, it goes back to this table, how are we going to get there to deliver Wildcat? So we can put it into CIP as a project we need to deliver, which is important to keep it there, but understanding that it's not funded, but it has a determination that we have to make within the next three years, five years, when we want to deliver that project. We're probably looking about three years out until we have designed and all that done. And that was probably the comeback in conversation with council and water commission, how do we now move that forward? But, yeah, we're talking about getting that definitely prominent in our five-year plan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andy, did Andy Burnham have, did you want to present what you've been working on on this?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this discussion, I think, is tying a few different comments that I've heard together. I think, you know, when we look at the projections that we do in the rate studies, you know, we're doing a, a multi-year forecast, and many communities will adopt a multi-year plan of increases, but we do have a fair degree of uncertainty in some big issues that we haven't fully tackled yet. And so, and especially relative to Wildcat, knowing that you have some master planning upcoming, you have some different design options and funding sources to figure out. you have some different design options and funding sources to figure out. It does seem like to me that, you know, as we look at this in the context of a five-year plan, you know, doing periodic updates and maybe it's in year three or, you know, every two years to take into account changes, whether it's in grant availability, changes in growth rates, changes in capacity fees or clarifications after discussions about the exact extent of the Wildcat expansion and how it will be funded. You could take those changes into account as part of modifications to your plan once you've made those determinations. So I think that's, that's kind of how we see a lot of communities deal with this because there's always a degree of uncertainty. And a lot of times these projections do need to be updated and calibrated to reflect, you know, actual occurrences that happen that oftentimes are different than projected to make sure that you don't get too far off course and have to have large corrective-type conversations. So I think that's one of the things we thought about is maybe making note of that is that's going to be a real trigger point to maybe do an update in three years when you have some clarity on the cost, the timing, the funding sources, to see how much of that may come back to rates when you've had a chance to vet that throughout the community and all the stakeholders.
So Councilmember Matthews and then Commissioner Dilde.
Thank you. So the impression that I've gotten over this first three quarters of a year that I've been on council is that the Wildcat project is like, that's looming out there as a really dark cloud that we need to get serious about. Is that correct? I mean, there is not one that we can shelf for 20 years. That's something we've got to get going, right? And then to Commissioner Rudell's comments about so many uncertainties and costs. I'm just wondering, like, there are grants that, that we're going to go after that we don't know. And, and I understand in the wisdom of projecting, well, this is the rate increase that we're going to need till, you know, throughout 2033 to do what we put on here. But it just, I get uncomfortable and I was uncomfortable with stormwater rates about this because there's still so much uncertainty, not only in cost, but in funding, alternative funding sources. Is, does it make sense or that's just not how government work works? Is to put a review in three years to see, like, do we continue the escalation that's approved? Or do we have to modify it in three years? Because I've never heard of a government entity reducing rates back down. Once they get it in place and they're charging it, they just replace it with new projects because it's already set in motion. And I worry about the cost of living here, which is already very high. And there's just so many unfunded projects or projects that have been postponed for years and years. It just seems like because of those uncertainties in funding sources and uncertainty in cost of delivering these projects, that a three-year trigger to review it to say, okay, we were able to get this funding, these other projects came up, maybe we need to increase the escalation rate, something. But I just, I, I don't feel comfortable just having this timeline out there, not knowing what's going to happen in between all those years because putting it on the, the back of the rate payers, you know, it just, I, I've mentioned on the desk that I have a nonprofit that this, this schedule will probably put me out of business, you know, on the, on the fully funded.
Sorry, I'm supposed to call in the back right now.
And, and so I know others, business businesses, this could impact them. And I want to be really sensitive to that. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of, especially our business, our commercial businesses in town, they've carried a heavy load. And I just, I just wanted to express that, that there's so much uncertainty that I feel like we should have a trigger in there to revisit instead of just letting it go blindly if all things considered, so that's all I have.
And this is something that we could revisit?
Yeah, by policy, we are supposed to revisit every three years. That's just a good utility policy. We will have a rate model from SandTech that Rick and our team can use to, you know, to true up and help inform.
Commissioner Dilde.
Well, I was just, I brought it up the other day and it still bugs me, is that are we charging the right price? It has to do with your concern about inflation and, and maybe commercials pay more than it should. I don't know, compared to other community. Communities, we were comparing ourselves to the big budget. We're not exactly, in my mind, ones we should be doing. We should be comparing ourselves to the valley and maybe other places up here or close. And are we priced right? Maybe residential should be more than it is. Or maybe as you go higher with the use, it doesn't get cheaper, it gets more to discourage higher use. So I haven't seen anything on that. I'm sure staff knows it, but I don't know it is. So I, I just lay, I lay this question out there, that's all. Because I think it would drive our ability to pay for things if we get more revenue.
And I'm wondering, do we have a tiered system for reclaimed water?
For the residential, yes. Reclaimed.
Reclaimed?
Yeah, residential reclaim pays a percentage of water waste. If they're residential and tiered, they pay the same, their use for re, for residential.
So.
If they're high user, they're going to pay more for reclaim.
But we don't do that for commercial?
No, that's complex, but we're going to look at that as part of studying that straight.
Okay. And so we could look at, at tiering it differently for commercial for, when we get up to, because a lot of this that we're talking about is capacity for wastewater, right? So if we wanted to, we could charge more at a certain level of use for reclaimed.
You can do any, but I want.
We're going to look at tiered rates, I believe, as part of the next phase. How do, now we know what revenues, we'll look at that as an option, I believe. But it's really hard with the businesses because there's such a variety of use for the type of businesses. You know, a department store versus a restaurant, both commercial in nature have different uses, different use levels. So how do you be equitable in your tier structure? But it's difficult.
And the, another option for commercial would be just an outdoor use rate versus an indoor.
Only if they have a separate meter, because we, we don't, that's the reason all outdoor use.
All right, I am going to take public comments if we've asked all of our questions. So let's start with the Honorable Ward.
I'm Ward Davis. I was on the Water Commission when we did the last study, so I got, and I really got into some of these parts, particularly the reclaimed. The 35% that was referenced has been there for a long, long time and it was used to get people off of potable and onto reclaimed. There's no, nothing magic about it. We've considered it, you know, water is becoming water. So we really think that that number will go to 35, 40, 45% or 50%. And people aren't going to jump off of reclaim to go to potable. So that's one of the issues you, you can, you can fight because it can go up. That's all.
Is there any other public comment?
My name's Errol Logan. I go to NAU, I'm a student undergrad freshman, major Psychological Sciences. I don't really have a comment or a question. I have been taking notes since this meeting has started, but the agenda has been dodgy. I was wondering if I would be able to give power of my presentation through email if it would be available on my.
Once we get, once I get all final documents, they'll be uploaded online. So where you were able to find the agenda for today, all of the materials will be as part of that packet. I would just say give me a day or two to make sure I get everything that's currently been presented.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
For the comment? Just curious as to why I chose this meeting?
Just curious.
Actually, it's probably one of the only meetings I could attend due to how I'm scheduling for classes. I was requested by my teacher for introduction to city planning. Only Stephen Gergen, professor of psychology. He has asked us to attend a city council meeting, specifically on Tuesdays at the end of the conference, which does not fit in with my time frame because I would be in psychology council at that time.
Studying psychology council.
Yes.
So one, one thing I've, as I was listening to all of this, like there's, yes, time goes back to Ben's comments too, is you strip away all the intricacies of all the little projects for majorly unfunded, right? Or we are way behind the curve on where we should be. So there's, whether, whether you take half these projects or all of the projects, you have a little variation in your mind, but still the trend is the same, right? So, so it seems as though we've gotten really bogged down in the details and kind of keeping the radar matured by this, like. We've got to figure out a different way to, to kick this rate up, right? And so that's the takeaway is that it's not, it's not whether the rate needs to change. It's how much the rate needs to change and how much of this list are we willing to cut off as a city and not do and take the risk that maybe it'll last ten years longer than we think it will? And so that's kind of, that's a, that's a tough thing to wrestle. But, yeah.
To me, that opens up the door for the can worms of examining the CIP. I'm willing to take staff's word for it that these are the projects we need to fund. But people are going to ask questions about your CIP projects. They'll get down in the weeds, of course. I don't know what the A.D.O.R. Rust thing is, rust fires, but I wasn't actually going to ask about that. But do we need to consider looking at the CIP and making judgments? Not me personally, but staff to say, hey, the rate would be a lot less or it would be half the increase if we cut these projects off because they're not important? Or this, this kind of discussion has occurred, I think, throughout time, right? It's like, no, cut half your projects, which ones would they be? And I'm, I'm not saying we go there, but you kind of brought it up and I think the public might want to go there. How many of these projects, are these really all that important? Can't you cut some of them? Give us a break. I, I don't know, I just throw that out there too because you kind of, yeah, I'm thinking the same way.
Commissioner Harris.
Well, they kind of said that when you talked about the, the park, the, how you're looping, that part, you, you know what I'm saying, okay? That would, because you said that if we didn't do that, everybody would still get water, right? It just makes it more efficient, is that kind of what?
Well, operational efficiency.
Operational efficiency? So we would say time, money, staff? What would we save in the operational efficiency if we did that?
You would save money and you would save water.
Water, okay, water's money. So we would have to figure out which, which project definitely we did not have to do because there would be, you know, it's kind of like when your kids, their needs at once are confused. You need this, but you want this. So not saying that our needs at once are confused or we're kids, but I'm just trying to think, you know, because you're right, you know? Maybe we don't need all of these.
I think people are going to ask the question.
I don't know.
But that's kind of like a tailspin going backwards. I don't know how you do that.
Hey, yes, I wouldn't suggest to go down that road too much. What I'm, what I'm saying is that there's a lot of stuff on here. Even if you take some of the fluff off the top, it's not changing the answer, the question you have to answer.
So.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. This is such a great meeting in the minds and I'm so grateful to our water commissioners. I'm grateful to each of you as individuals for giving your time and talent to the cause of water, water conservation and just our delivery and everything that goes into what we do. Very grateful. So I don't know if we're making any firm decisions today, but this is a public meeting. I'm happy to telegraph some thoughts to you all. I think there's plenty of room left for discussion as we move forward. And I am by no means suggesting that what I'm thinking and feeling right now is, is going to represent how, you know, a, a lot of this is going to come down to up or down votes at the end of the day and, and I wouldn't want to corner myself into any, anything. But I, I do have some bigger thoughts on, on this discussion. The first one, I'll kind of work backwards because we, we just had some comments about whether or not the, the items on this list are, are truly essential. I don't think it's helpful for us to get into a conversation like that. I firmly trust our city staff to have already had those difficult conversations many times. And we're already late to the game on all of this. If they say, if, if, if there's a project on that list, then the vetting process for whether or not it should be on that list has already occurred. I'm certainly not going to insert myself and micromanage that level of, and, and, you know, second guess the brain trust of incredible water talent that we have on our staff. And so one of the other points I want to make is we're talking about water here. I mean, I just, I just want to stay big and think about these things from the perspective of our citizenry. From the side of you wake up one morning and you go to turn on the tap and the water doesn't come out. I mean, this is the worst-case scenario, but it's in the ballpark of what we're talking about. The, the, the very basic, if, if you were to do a survey and ask anybody on the street, what is the one thing you expect your municipal government to do? I bet there's one of two answers. The first would be public safety or the first might be clean water. I get clean water delivered to my house every day, every minute, every time I go to turn on the tap, every time I go to use the bathroom. And so what we're generally talking about is the most essential and critical function we have as a city. And what I'm hearing from these discussions that we've had today and also, excuse me, last week, is that there's some fiber alarm, fire bells going off about whether or not we can continue to do the one most basic thing that the public expects of us. And we're fighting that by deferring it into the future as, as in terms of when the final crisis emerges and evinces itself. So I just, I don't, I, when we're tackling this, personally, I don't want to pussyfoot around what's needed, what's expected and what we've got to do. I think even at the minimum, this is a very difficult conversation in terms of the tax burden, rate payers and the cost of living. But I'm finding myself fairly supportive of going all in and funding this fully as much as we can with the promise to actually revisit this later if we're finding we're getting a little bit of a cushion. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Matthews that governments don't tend to reduce rates. But that could be a bargaining chip that we use to our favor in these discussions. And also in terms of, you know, how this, how we negotiate this with the public over time, I think it's important to keep in mind that if, if, if we start small. I think it's important to keep in mind that if we start small, people are going to be very upset if we have to go big. So just in terms of our positioning, I believe there should be solid support for going all in on this. And that's what we should be telling the public. And when they start seeing how difficult that's going to be, maybe we can lean off of it a little bit. Maybe we can find some of those projects that really can be waited upon and get to a lesser number. But that's the direction we should be negotiating in, especially here at the beginning. So that's a lot. I think there was one or two other points I wanted to make. Oh, yeah, you know, Ward talked about water is water. I definitely want everybody to know that that is clearly the way I think about this and the way I will be, that will lean heavily into my decision-making. And also, you know, when we're talking about technologies and innovations and our water services, I don't want to just be in a rubric or a paradigm of maintenance. I think we need to be upgrading and we need to be innovating and we need to be embracing and adopting the latest technologies. And that's another reason why I think going all in just buys us the most amount of leverage. And then finally, what, oh, shoot, it was right there and then I lost it again. Well, I think that's plenty to consider for right now, just some of the ways in which I'm thinking about this. But counsel, I think it's, I feel strongly, instinctively, that from a political standpoint and from doing the right thing, we need to be expressing to the public that this is a crisis. This is the most basic thing they expect us to deliver, and we're really troubled by the very difficult decisions we have to make. But here we are, and this is what we need to do. And then, and then the last point, which I do remember now, is just that how things get more expensive if we wait on them. Really, the fiscal responsible thing to do is to go all in right now, pay for as much as we can at this time, and set ourselves up on very, very good footing for innovations and upgrades and new technologies as the future presents itself. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. In calculating these rates and estimating what we have to collect to then pay for these projects, we have, we're a second home city in a lot of regards. And right now, we don't have, we're basing it, our water usage at least, on usage as opposed to base. Have we looked at, I mean, we've got a lot of housing development going on on Butler and over off Woody Mountain and stuff, and so that will add to the rate payers, but then also add to the usage. But I'm just wondering if because we are a second hometown and we've got Pine Canyon, who's now deserted pretty much for half of the year, I'm wondering, have we looked at, well, if we did a base instead of usage, like put that percentage more to where it's flatter and not put so much on the usage? Would that help us get there and make it more equitable for us that live here full-time that are paying for all this because there are pockets in our community that don't, you know, are just paying the base rate because they turn the water off in the wintertime? So I'm just wondering.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
Can we charge, I'm always told no in terms of taxes, and I get it. Can we charge a different base rate for a home that's lived in full-time versus one that's either rented out as a short-term rental or as a second home? Let's see if attorneys.
I don't know if we can justify, but something to look at. I don't know.
So Mayor and Councilmember Matthews, we are, we're getting to that phase. That's why we wanted to get your direction today so that we can move forward to that. But we're looking at short-term rentals for another community, actually Pecosa Area Water and Sand District in Colorado. Which is so, it's interesting that you bring that up because these short-term rentals have a bigger impact in the winter on the, as it's this year. But anyway, that, you know, your current water rate structure has a base charge plus a volume or usage charge, and it's your sewer charge that is just the volume. We are going to look at everything. We'll look at how much revenue to recover from that base charge versus the volume or usage charge. We'll look at different rate structures. There are different reasons why you would select a different rate structure. It's all going to be based on the cost of service as well. So some communities have standby charges that even if you are not occupying your home, you still could show up at any moment, expect to turn that tap on, you know, and expect to have service. So there are, they come up, there's a bunch of different ways we can look at those types of charges.
You know, I think on equity, you know, you have people that are in older neighborhoods that live here, you know, usage. And then you have people that, you know, are turning out their water for months at a time. And we, when you just look at the revenues that we're gathering now on the rates, that could really, if we change that percentage, that could help make it more equitable to the people who, you know, use it all the time, that live up here and not have to carry that burden because we're providing that service to everybody, right? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. We will, we'll make sure we put that into the pricing considerations. Thank you.
City Manager.
Yeah, just a very clear caveat on that. I know it's a distant discussion, but I think the factor here reflects that there's probably more on the second home ownership rather than short-term rental. I think they're both worthy of discussion. Having just gone through our short-term rental ordinance and looking at a lot of data which we've had is surprisingly a pretty small component of our housing composition, like I think under 2% or somewhere in that ballpark. Second home ownership, I haven't seen those numbers, so this is entirely anecdotal, but I think it's going to, it's going to be significant. And I think this discussion, you know, should, would there be some sort of vacancy rate that is charged for second home ownership that turns off this water for times of the year, I think is a, could be a very relevant discussion. Thanks.
And I'm going to open it up to public comment again. Ready to get it. Are you getting from us what you were looking for?
I think it would be helpful to hear from a couple more council members if we should proceed, how we should proceed with what level of investment?
Okay.
What are you saying?
Just to get back up on the screen.
So, yes.
We lost our Water Commission forum, so what does that, one, two, three, four? No, we still have four?
Yes.
Okay. Don't leave. Five, sorry. Okay.
Okay, so, so moving on. Before we do that, Ward.
I just wanted to remind people of what happened last time because it sort of informs this time. So the last study, there were two options. One was 3% increase, one was seven. They, 3% was pushed hard, but it did some really bad things, and we ended up with 4.3%. Seven would have been fund everything and do it right. Then, we're two years late, so we haven't had the increases of 7%. We've only had three. So that's why we're here.
Thank you. And Sterling.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all, members of the council and the commission. I'm glad we do still have a quorum of the commission. I just wanted to comment, and City Manager Clifton, you brought up the vacancy rate for those that are only in the community part of the time. That is something that has come up before. If that's formal direction, I did want to indicate that there's some legal research that will need to be done on that as well. I understand there are some communities that have done it, and there are some, just some i's that I would like to dot, t's that I'd like to cross to make sure that we're going to be okay to do that, if that is direction that we receive. So thank you.
And, yeah, Al.
Just really briefly, I would advocate for full-cost recovery. I think that that's crucial in moving forward. And then I think you ought to think about utilizing some of the assets that you own for long-term leases that could recover some cash that you could then put against what you have to expand. Particularly, I'm talking about Red Gap and the possibilities that exist there. But there are other assets that you control as well.
And as painful as it's looking to be, I too would prefer that we get done what we need to get done and stop falling behind in our capital projects. And I think it is going to be painful. Councilmember Sweet.
I agree. I like that you all worked out the alternative option. And I do think we need to take the bull by the horn and get this done.
Councilmember House.
Thank you. I'll just share that I am in agreement with that as well. I do want to put forward again, I think it was Councilmember Matthews, brought up the question of just continuously examining and making sure that we are considering equity and equitability, really, in these considerations. I think along with looking at part-time residency and second homeownerships, one of the other parts of that equity question is going to be examining the impacts to some of the older neighborhoods that I think did come up. And Councilmember Matthews, it might have been you that brought that up. But just considering the infrastructure of some of the older neighborhoods of our community where they are going to be more likely to have, you know, leaky pipes or other things that are going to drive their costs higher at no fault of their own. But those are going to be things that we have to think about. And some of the feedback that I would anticipate hearing from community members, particularly in those neighborhoods, is as we're striving for that equitable approach, there are going to be some of those sorts of factors to consider. As tough as it is to take all of that sort of thing into consideration, I think that it behooves us to at least acknowledge it and put it out there as a consideration so that folks know, you know, we're not overlooking some of those traditionally overlooked neighborhoods or populaces. We did think about it, and we might not be able to come up with a fully equitable solution for some of those challenges that are beyond their control and beyond ours. But at least it's part of the consideration.
And I'll say, for equity reasons too, I would, I would prefer to see us put more of the burden on usage rather than base. And it's another way to support conservation.
Councilmember Matthews.
Well, I just want to reiterate, I guess there's two different ways to look at that. Again, going back to the second home scenario, they're going to pay very little for six months out of the year. So I'd like to kind of see how that plays out, if that is in your study to say, well, if the base increased X, still not maybe over what our lower-income families, you know, not putting them out of the market, but just bringing the second home, homeowners into more of a participation in these costs? I know it doesn't matter today, but I'm frustrated that here we are again having to make up for deferred projects. And now we're at a critical point, again, just like stormwater, and it's us that's going to have to, you know, I just worry about the economy, about the businesses, the usage, and what's going to be the long-term effect of when the stormwater rates go up and these water rates go up on some of our bigger businesses? Are we going to start seeing them exit our community? Because they can no longer, the cost of doing business here is too high. And I think that that's critical because then that just all comes back down to us, right? If we don't have jobs and we don't have this. And so I don't think it's, this is a hard discussion. And I understand, I don't want to defer anything, but I'm just really, just not happy with where we are right now. But I do, I would like to see how it impacts the different businesses and consumers, residential, and just really have a clear idea of how we can get to the same goal, but in different scenarios. And that's going to be really important for me.
And regarding the base, if there is a way that, that second homes can have a different rate or homes that aren't lived in year-round can have a different rate, I think that's where we could make it up if it's legal.
Like if they don't use X amount a year, then they go to the base rate as opposed to somebody that uses it.
Everything that's legal.
All right. Are there any, may I ask clarifying questions? Yes, please.
Would we be looking at the alternative option for water, wastewater and reclaimed? Is that the, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes. Okay. So we've given direction. We feel good. This meeting is adjourned.
Do you want the commission to vote on something?